Oh, six o'clock. Here we go.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Creaker.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Yeah.
Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten, five, eight, action on open and closed minutes from August 22, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public. A must be limited to items not on the agenda. You must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody in the audience or online who would like to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Is there anybody who would like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving forward. Number seven, written communication or announcements. Seven, eight, I received this letter in the mail from a, I don't think it's a resident of the village, but she wanted, it was addressed to the village board, so, about preserving some of the land that's over on Pilgrim and Ashland. Lot of it is floodway, so there probably wouldn't be much done. Okay, and the Halloween trick-or-treat hours, chief, is four to seven, right?
Yep, that is correct, four, seven.
He's working. There we go. Hey, yeah, four to seven hours, same as last year on the 31st. That's in conjunction with our surrounding communities as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other communications or announcements? I do have one more. Don't forget that Friday, October 6th, which is next Friday, 9:30 at Community Center is Pancakes and Politics. So, any residents who would like to go, or any of the board members can make it. You're all welcome.
I didn't see that.
Yep, it's in the, it's in the flyer.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
I must have overread it.
Pancakes and Politics. Okay, number eight, action on the consent agenda. Eight, A, budgeted expenditures. B, 2023 year-to-date general fund financial report as of 8/16/23. C, the investment report. D, the Public Works monthly department report. E, Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department reports. And that's it. I need a motion on the consent agenda unless someone wants something pulled.
I'm moved on the.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by several people to approve the consent agenda as, as said forward. Any other further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine is a public hearing. Public hearing regarding a planned unit development request by gridiron entities for a new Cambria Hotel located at 2145 South Oneida Street, parcels VA-67-A-8, VA-67-A, VA-460-P-108, and VA-90-4-11. Aaron.
All right, thank you. As depicted on the screen, you see the area bound in yellow, which is the subject properties for the PUD as listed in the agenda item. The requested PUD is to exceed the 36-foot height maximum for this area up to 58 feet. So again, to increase it from 36 feet to 58 feet from finish grade for a four-story Cambria Hotel to be located on the northern end of that property. The request is, is tonight for the PUD only. Do want to note that the proposed hotel is a permitted use already within the zoning district, as well as the ancillary cocktail lounge, restaurant, so on so forth with the hotel itself. In addition to the PUD request for the height, there's also a, a note to a minimum number of parking spaces. In your report, it says 127. Due to some minor tweaks on the site as they're kind of fine tuning things, that is now 122 spaces. So the PUD ordinance would be adjusted to reflect the 122 off-street parking spaces for the property. As I mentioned, the property is within the VC Village Center zoning district. Hotel is a permitted use. The proposed hotel will be reviewed in terms of site plan, starting next week, Tuesday, with Site Plan Review Committee, then go to Plan Commission for Site Plan Review, and then ultimately Village Board next month, as well for, for Site Plan Review. In terms of quick layout of the site plan, just so you have an idea of where this is Here's the, it's an L-shaped building. Oneida Street is right here. The frontage on Oneida Street is minimized to try to reduce some of the impact to the neighbors across the street on Oneida Street. You see the 122 parking spaces right here, and then the hotel, of course, is right here on the northern end of the property. Elevations, just for informational purposes, again, the elevation, exterior materials, so on so forth, will all be reviewed through the Site Plan Review process next month. If, I guess with that, that's, oh, I did have a late communication from Slindy Realty. I just need to enter that into the record. I'll hand those out when I'm completed here. Have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll wait for questions probably until the action item. Joel, anything to add?
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this project? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? This gentleman is coming up.
I'm not up to the air.
Okay, could you have a seat and talk into the mic and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Eric Weber. I live right over on Fox 6 Lane, right across the street from where all this is going to happen. My biggest concern is if the hotel is approved, what will it do to rent an area, especially to people like myself who's on a fixed income?
Okay, I cannot answer that. Does maybe the developer want to answer that? I don't know that anybody can answer that.
That's my biggest concern.
Yeah, okay.
Is, is the value of property where rent might go up for those of us who can barely afford it.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody can.
I can try to address that as best I can. My name is Aaron Schudy. I'm the Development Director for the Village. When it comes to rent in the state of Wisconsin, it is truly a function of the market. There is no ability to implement any kind of rent control under state statute. So it comes down to supply and demand and what your, what your landlord is, is offering and what you're willing to accept for rent.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, did you want to say something? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is John Tomasich, and I own the business Green Bay Art at 2129 South Oneida Street, which is in Asheville Square. And I'm kind of have, I'm in a unique position of also living right across the street. So, I am 80 yards from the front door of my house to my business. I've been there 11 years. I've enjoyed it a lot. And if it can take a little bit of humor, in a couple of months, I'm going to get kicked out of my space, but I'm going to have the benefit of having a hotel get put up across from my house. So, you know, what could, what could be better. But despite that, I'm actually here to say that I support, I support this. And I wasn't, I wasn't real keen on it, on it being a five-story with two commercial buildings, taking that much of Oneida Street up. But this revised plan, which has a minimal amount of frontage on Oneida Street, and is, has a lot of parking lot there, that's really not that bad. I mean, there, there's a lot worse things that, that could be there. So, and, and times are changing. You know, we know the property's going to get developed. It's an underutilized property. Something's going to go there. And, and I think with this new plan, it possibly could be one of the best things that we could have there. And just to elaborate a little bit, today before I came here, I spent about a half hour out in my yard, looking right across the street at Asheville Square, contemplating the next step in my life as, you know, things change and I move on. And I looked around and saw all the things that were happening around here. And I, I got to tell you, for starters, when I looked over at, at Element, it looks like a monster. I mean, honestly, it looks like a monster. I felt like I was in the War of the Worlds with this big, huge monster coming down at me. But you know, that's because I'm used to seeing empty fields there or some of those duplexes that weren't the hottest things to look at either. And I think the fact of the matter is, the, the places are pretty classy. And as you look around here and see all these things, we're, we're getting a little bit of a, a more urbane feel. It's, you know, it took me a little while to get used to these big buildings, but they look classy, and I, and I think, I think they're, I mean, I'll get used to them. And then I, and I looked across the street and I said, well, something's going to happen there. And I said, what if we had four fast food restaurants move in? I'm not against fast food restaurants. I'm trying to frequent, frequent them a little bit less, but I'm not against that. But if I had four different businesses with all kinds of different signage, cars coming in and out all, all the time, all day and night, you know, garbage on the street, or I could have a very classy hotel with mostly parking lot and hopefully some trees in there, you know, in the end, to me, to me, it looks, it looks, it looks pretty good. I, this is, I mean, I'm, I'm going off a little bit here, but I'll just say that I've been very impressed with this process so far. From the start, where we had some of the meetings where a lot of the residents raised a lot of heck, and things kind of got shot down, then we got a revised proposal. I think that process is working well. I've appreciated the, I'm not in, I'm not, I don't get involved in politics, but I appreciate the, the village members being available. You talked to us out on the sidewalk. You talked after this, and I feel we've really been heard. I feel the developers have responded. And I think, I think we're all trying to have Ashwabanen be the most, the nicest place it can be. We have four incredible things here. The world-famous Green Bay Packers. We have commercial development that Ashwabanen, this is coming to Ashwabanen now. We're getting a very classy, urbane residence, residences with the apartment. And the most impressive thing, the thing I'd always tell people from out of town, when they're, when they're just going crazy about the Green Bay Packers, is that if you think there's something, walk a block away and look at the beautiful residential neighborhood that's there. Because it's unbelievable how we could have this huge, incredible, world-class Packer organization and yet have a down-to-earth neighborhood right next to it. Throw in some classy residential stuff on this side of Oneida, and some more commercial things, and I think you're going to have a really incredible place. So the only concern I have, though, as I think about the hotel, I'm just wondering, which I know we're not addressing all these issues tonight, of course, but, but, you know, what kind of lights are going to shine in my living room? What kind of noises are going to be? You know, but I think all these things will be addressed. I mean, I, I have, I have the belief that they'll be addressed. There are not enough worries to keep me from it. So I just think, in the end, this seems like a pretty classy, a pretty good project, and I'm not sure what would be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this project? State your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Starich, 2122 South Oneida Street. I've spoken at every meeting, so I apologize for all the folks that have heard me more than once. But as I've mentioned in my previous comments, my husband and I are longtime residents of South Oneida Street. We raised our children in this location, and we have enjoyed the many street upgrades and the business development along the corridor of South Oneida Street, specifically between Morris Avenue and Cormier Road. While that growth and development has had a positive impact in many ways, it does come with its own set of concerns. If we make an exception to the 36-foot height restriction for one development, that will likely set precedent for future developments, specifically along this corridor. If the village is willing to compromise this unique, one-of-a-kind residential neighborhood once, there is really no reason why it should not happen again and again. This is evident by the approval of the now defunct development on the corner of South Oneida Street and Marvell Lane. In essence, the neighborhood will be taken away from the homeowners if we continue down this path. While I understand that Ashwabanen is landlocked, and the only direction we can continue to grow is up, the additional, the addition of added stories of development will only increase the already high amount of traffic. The traffic along the corridor has increased drastically over the last several years. Along with the increase in vehicles, the speed at which it travels, and the occurrence of reckless driving and behaviors has also increased. As I have stated at previous meetings, it does not appear that enough is being done to control this issue, and enlarging, allowing large developments, ones that exceed the height restrictions, is only going to add to this concern. I believe that our public safety officers have higher priority items to be focusing on than the traffic on Oneida Street, and I've made numerous attempts, along with Erin's assistance, to get in contact with someone at the county to discuss my concerns, and specifically discuss the addition of a stoplight at the corner of Marvell Lane and South Oneida Street. After several attempts to contact the county late this afternoon, I did receive an email stating that the county does not feel that a stoplight is warranted. They may reevaluate that decision after the area develops more. I understand that a stoplight would not have reduced the amount of traffic in the area, but it would have helped to slow down the speed in which it is traveling and helped to reduce the amount of reckless behaviors. Without the benefit of slowing down traffic along this corridor, what can the residents expect from the village to ensure our safety? I am not anti-development along this corridor or any other area within the village, but I am concerned that both the county and the village are seemingly unwilling to put the safety of the residents ahead of the development. All that I'm asking for is reasonable assurance on the part of the village that they are going to work on behalf of the residents that is along this stretch of Oneida Street to protect our quality of life. I would also like to add, I wrote this this afternoon, I had a really productive conversation with Erin before the meeting, and I do think that the village is willing to work with us. But I'm concerned that your hands are tied because it is a county road. And so, it's ironic that you can approve development on a county road, but you can't do anything to control the flow of traffic. And it's not pretty, and it, they drag race, and they, they are reckless. And it's really only a matter of time before there's more accidents. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, is there anybody that would like to speak for or this development? Yep, come on up. If you could all state your name and address for the record, please.
Alex Paternos, 1220 East Fillmore Avenue, Eau Claire, Wisconsin.
Amy McNally, 4300 North Richmond in Appleton, Wisconsin.
Jeff Van Beaver, 2145 South Oneida Street.
Tim Wren, 1617 Cass Street.
Okay, I wanted to start off by saying I, I'd like to give a little summary of, of where we're coming from, and the development team would be available for questions, concerns, issues for, after, after I'm done talking. I would like to reemphasize that we have heard the concerns of the Plan Commission, Site Plan Committee, and neighbors, and we are willing to do what it takes to be moving this project forward and be a good neighbor, and make appropriate changes within the four-story Cambria Hotel. The majority of the neighbors from Marvell Lane to Morris Avenue on Oneida Street are in favor of the four-story Cambria Hotel. Neighbors that I spoke with are not looking to do A or B and B or sell their property. I believe this is the silent majority. As you would have in your packet, there is a signature document where neighbors have signed and said, we agree and approve of, we, we are looking, we approve of this four-story document, this hotel. In fact, last week, we added a few more signatures after the last, the last meeting. At the last meeting, I spoke with, to an Element Apartment couple at the last meeting, and they're very excited, along with others at the Element Apartments, that a four-story hotel, Cambria specifically, is being proposed. And that PUDs were approved for the height restriction on the following. As you'd see in your packet, there's two listed there. The four-story apartment building for Slindy Development behind the 2145 South Oneida Street Building, and the four-story Nifong Office Building one block south of us on Oneida Street. And our goals are basically simple for this redevelopment, changing a blighted and deteriorated property into an excellent new development, as we're really not looking to put money into the existing property for improvement. And also to create a walking and biking urban environment is really a neat thing. Neighborhood properties would increase in value. As you see in your packet, the Mark Pucci letter from Colliers will speak to that. And people would, would want to, we believe, want to move to this area, not away. And that's, that's where my discussion with the neighbors are. They're excited about that. And new development provides wonderful services to the village. And one of the concerns that came up was the noise concern for the rooftop lounge. There will be no live entertainment or bands allowed on the rooftop lounge. The rooftop lounge is targeted towards hotel patrons. But I will say, in talking to many neighbors on Oneida Street, they're very excited to see that lounge come and to check it out. In the, in the packet, you'll see a letter from Roger Ide, and he is an expert in sound, and things that we can do to minimize noise, and we are all for that. Our timetable we're looking at is to raise this year, this project, we feel, really needs to keep moving. We want to be open a few months before the NFL Draft in, in 2025, April of 2025. As construction takes about 12 to 14 months, we believe this will have a great impact on the village of Ashwabanen. And we would like to see revenue stay in Ashwabanen instead of hotels in neighboring communities, not only for the draft, but year-round. And, and Erin mentioned the parking. We're at 122 stalls on, onsite and 100 stalls offsite. And we just, we want to thank you for this time. We're going to do everything we can to, to satisfy the people around us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any of you have anything else to add to that, or? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this project? Is there anybody else online or in the audience who would like to speak for or against this project? Okay, hearing nobody else that would like to speak, I need a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close.
Start again. Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, action items. Ten, A, Consider Discuss Act on Ordinance Number 09-1-23, approving a planned unit development overlay zoning district for 2213 to 2145 South Oneida Street, Parcels VA-67-A-8, VA-67-A, VA-460-P-108, and VA-90-4-11 regarding maximum height and minimum number of off-street parking spaces. Now, before we go into this item, I just want to tell everybody and remind everybody again, this is strictly on the height, doesn't it? And the, and the 122 parking stalls. It doesn't have anything to do with the, the layout. It doesn't have anything to do with color of the building, anything. It's strictly the 58-foot PUD. Okay? Okay, Erin, do you want to add anything?
All right, thank you. In terms of the project, as I mentioned, it will, whatever happens tonight, it does still need Site Plan Review Committee review, Plan Commission review, and Village Board review, which will occur next month's timeline. In terms of, I didn't mention Plan Commission action, that was a seven to zero vote to recommend approval last week, Tuesday, on the 19th, with the four-story and 127 stalls. But again, as mentioned, they are at 122 off-street parking stalls at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
What was the reasoning behind the 36-foot height restriction when it was put in? And when was that put in?
That was put in back in 2007. And Patrick and I did some research, and I appreciate his help on digging up the, the minutes and the, the ordinance from that time. It seemed like there was a lot of discussion that was put together. There was a committee. And ultimately, we didn't have a whole lot of background on why it was put in place. My understanding, there was some discussion about another project somewhere around Ridge Road, Title Town area. And there was a need to, or there was a desire to put in place height restrictions. I think from a, a village standpoint, moving forward, we do need to evaluate our height requirements, and take a look at it in terms of what the village is looking at today from its comprehensive plan standpoint, our design guidelines, so on so forth.
Trustee Service, I was at every one of those meetings when they, when they did the height committee. I, and I cannot remember exactly why they did it, but I think it was that condo project that was supposed to go up on Ridge Road, and that's why they did it. But I can't remember any of the details of any of the meetings. And I don't know that anybody took any notes. So, that was when they decided that. So, anyway. Yeah. So, this is strictly the 58-foot height and the 122 parking stalls.
I just have a few comments in regard to the whole project. We've talked a lot about the 2007 height study, which is 16 years old. So, the information that was put together was well thought through. Mary was on committee. She said they spent a lot of time on it. But the corridor that they were talking about at that time was very different than it is today. It's 16 years later. This corridor is a very important corridor in Ashwabanen, and it has a high impact on our residents, both the residents on the east side of this development and the residents that are located on the west side of this development, and as well as future developments around this corridor. This young lady had talked about what's going to happen in the future when more development comes in. Is this precedent setting? 36 feet was put in place for a reason. And again, it's old, it's 16 years old. But at the time, we felt very strongly that a study needed to be done. I think now, with this development being in a very important corridor in the village of Ashwabanen, we need to take a step back. And we need to look at what this corridor has become, what guidelines we already have in place. Slindy Real Estate gave us some information tonight about the urban design guidelines, which I've looked at, and I have looked at in total, but that impacts this area as well. And I think we need to get a committee together again to look at the height restrictions in this corridor. We owe it to our residents to do our due diligence and make sure that what we're putting in here will be good for them for the next 25 years. Because we all know this building's going to be here for a long time. It'll be well-built, and it'll be here. It'll be well-built, and it'll be here. So, let's take our time, let's look at it, let's do some research and get our act together on this, and then make a decision. Someone else, I can't remember who said it, maybe Erin just said it, we, he feels that we need to do a height study. I agree. It needs to be done before this is approved. Once this is approved, we may come back and say, heck, we think it should be 30 feet, 20 feet out there. And now we have a building that we've approved with little or no study at 58 feet. So, my recommendation, my motion is that at this time, we deny this variance, and we put a committee together, and we do our research, we do our due diligence. If this development is good right now, there's no reason six months, three months, four months from now, it cannot be good and meet the guidelines that we will set forth and the research and the due diligence that we have done to make sure this is an asset to our community. I realize the draft's coming in 2025, but you know what? Discover Green Bay is now located on the corner on Lombardi, they're going to bring a heck of a lot more development into, or commercial business in this community and a lot more things going on, so if we miss 2025, there's a lot more coming behind it. So, that is my motion, that we deny this, and we get a committee together and do our due diligence and look into making a good, sound decision for this development.
Okay, so Trustee Flueke has put up a motion. Is there a second so we can have discussion on it?
I'll second, and I, and that was well-stated, Tracy. That, that kind of goes at the heart of what I, when people were asking me the last couple of weeks, what I thought about it was, my, my, almost my first question always was, what's our vision going forward there in that area? And without that vision, I don't know how I can make a vote, you know, one way or another. It's not like it's a small project going in there that nobody's going to notice. It's a pretty significant start to what might change a lot of things there. I tend to agree with Tracy at, we've got to get a vision, I think, as a, as a village here before we act on something like this.
I can't say that I disagree with that, so.
Yeah, I, I think that it, there's nothing bad about this project, it's just we, it's changing what is happening in that area, and we need to probably spend time to, to look at that. We had some discussions even before the meeting that we need to look at the height restrictions, because a lot has also changed in that, in that, like Tracy said, in 16 years, the price of land 16 years ago is a lot different than what it is today, and that is something that goes into figuring out, how are you going to calculate what somebody can put in on, on a commercial lot to even make it proper? So, there's that side of it, we have the residence side of it, what's happening in a residence area and their feelings, so it's probably the right thing to do to, to actually go out there and do a study.
How many more projects are we going to have come to this village and then do a study, and then the projects go away? You know, I, I understand where you're going with this, I realize we should probably do something on the study, but my question is, how many projects are going to come and we're doing a study in?
I agree with Gary. I'm more concerned about the timeline, I know how important that draft can be to develop this. I don't know if we can ask that question to the developer, that if they miss this, is this project going to die off? Do we need to, can we ask that question?
We would, yeah, we'll have to open the floor, though.
Can I make a motion to open the floor?
If it's a question specifically for the developer, you can ask it just directly without opening the floor.
Okay.
So, I guess that's my question. If this doesn't go through tonight and delays the development process, what is that going to do to this specific development?
That type of delay would hurt the project tremendously. We would have to reevaluate the project as a whole.
But you're kind of only talking three days of full, you know, a week, around there.
Yeah, it's about a week.
Yeah, that, that it would be full, so, I mean, you're obviously looking at this to be full a lot more than just the draft week. I get that's the target, but.
You know, to do a study, anything I've seen in this governmental affair takes time. They don't, you know, time, time to a developer is important, and this isn't going to happen in a couple of weeks or a couple of months. That's going to put any project that would come in front of us on Oneida Street out of the window.
Erin, what do you think as far as the timeline to get a study done?
To do a good study, you're looking at, it's going to take time. A lot of research on the front end, we have the holidays coming up, I would say probably six months.
And that's one thing as a development team that we did not factor in, based on past approvals in the area, was having to wait to get a study done. We feel like we've done everything possible to make the neighborhood happy, as well as the Plan Commission.
I mean, absolutely, I mean, the project is a good one. I just truly believe because of this corridor where it's located, we need to do our due diligence and make sure that it fits in, this will impact that whole corridor, and make sure we get what we want. And, you know, Gary, I understand what you're saying with development, you know, we, it's, you know, on expense, and, you know, it's great that they want to be here, but I think a lot of business and a lot of development wants to come to Ashwabanen, so if this one doesn't fit and it's not going to work, then maybe another one comes, and maybe it's different or better, or something that we feel more comfortable with, so. I don't think letting, waiting six months is going to stop development at all.
One of, one of the things that, when this first came about, this, at the five-story level, 70 feet, I was talking with a friend of mine, and, you know, the one unique thing that we have in the village is we do have one of only 32 NFL teams, and ours is the only one that is literally plunked in the middle of a residential area. And she said that that is, that is what makes Green Bay so unique, so we have to find a good balance, and this is a real hard dilemma for us, too, you know, we have to find a balance between what do we want to see in that area, and maybe it's, maybe it's 42 feet, but we've already okayed 58 feet, so I, I agree, I think we maybe got to step back a little bit and, and look at it, make it, make sure it's right. And maybe it's 58 feet, I don't know what that is.
Well, you know, let's look back five years or whatever the time period is, for anything that we have built right behind us, or to the north of us, has been four stories and more. You can do all the studies you want, take that into consideration, and what are you going to get on Oneida Street with the cost of land? You can only go, afford to go up, you can't afford to buy a block anymore and make something happen. So, it's going to be a height thing all the time.
Right. The only thing is that those other four-story buildings, Gary, their height restriction is much higher.
The pot.
Their height restriction behind it is much higher than what.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but the norm is.
So. Yep.
Any future projects will still have to go through this process. The, the narrative about setting a precedent seems a little false to me, that everything will be approved in the future, they'll still have to go through this same process, correct?
Yes, a PUD, yeah, if they want to exceed, right now, 36 feet, yes, they would. Anyway, any other comments? So, we have a motion and a second to deny the PUD at the 58-foot height with the 122 parking stalls. Anybody else wanted questions, comments, concerns? Okay, all those in favor of denying, say aye. 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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Nay.
So, can we, who voted no? Gary Kelly?
Chris.
And Chris?
And Jay.
And Jay. Okay, so, motion failed. Now, does someone make, want to make a motion to approve the 58-foot height with the 122 parking spots? It's the other option.
I'll make a motion to approve with the 122 parking spaces.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 58-foot height with the 122 parking stalls.
Under discussion. Where did the 122 parking stalls come from?
That, Erin O.
That was a concern they kept hearing about was making sure that the property was parked adequately to accommodate 100 hotel rooms. Industry standard is typically one stall per hotel room, so the 122 ended up covering that minimum.
And then some, right?
Correct.
Because they're 100, and, so that's a concern, I have 122 parking spaces, it's just going to be an expansive parking with this project, too, but I know, oh, I guess this is part of the, part of the PDU, too, so, just a question, okay, thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the PUD at 58 feet with 122 parking stalls. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great discussion. Okay, 10B, Consider Discuss Act on a Special Event Application for Festival Foods Turkey Trap. Chris?
A request has been made for approval of the Festival Food Turkey Trap road closures. Public Safety has approved the route, from my understanding, it hasn't changed from previous years, and it was decided that a representative, didn't have to be in attendance because it's the same route.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Special Event Application for Festival Foods Turkey Trap. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. 10C, Consider Discuss Act on an informational memo to the Village Board Regarding Short-Term Rental Operator Focus Group Meetings. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. So, as indicated in your staff report as part of the packet, at the May 2023 Village Board Meeting, Trustee Krieger had requested staff meet with Ashwabanen licensed short-term rental operators to obtain their thoughts and feedback on recent changes that the board had made regarding Chapter 6, Article 13, licensing of those operators. The village did end up offering three separate meetings or focus groups where we invited any licensed operators from the prior year to attend. They were asked to, more or less RSVP, if you will, for those meetings so that we were prepared for the size of the group. All told, meetings are, the, the meetings were held on August 8th, August 17th, and August 21st. Between those three meetings, 12 licensed operators chose to attend those meetings. Erin had put together a, a kind of a comprehensive report, if you will, on those particular focus groups for your information. At this point in time, no action is needed from the board, other than to maybe take a motion to receive and place on file the memorandum. We did identify several key points that were brought forward to us by multiple licensed operators, and those are included in the memo. Of those five items that we addressed in the memo to the board, number one really was the substantial issue that was presented to us, and that the recent change to our ordinance created a sunset clause to the six-night or seven consecutive day requirement. So, if you recall, existing licensees from the last license period that are in good standing would not need to comply for a period of one licensing period on the six-night or six consecutive, or seven consecutive day requirement, that then sunsetting July 1 of 2024. That, of course, obviously, will impact them substantially from an income generating standpoint, and all told, I, I think, from, from a general point of view, if that provision was stricken, that sunset provision of that requirement, they would be satisfied knowing that they would not need to abide by that six consecutive day requirement. There were some other minor matters that they brought forward, such as reporting and thing, and enforcement matters, but many of those things can be resolved with some minor efficiencies and tweaks to how we administer the actual code. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions from the board or take any directives, but all we're seeking at this point, from a staff point of view, is to receive and place on file the report.
Now, Joel, I just want to clarify that all we did with this ordinance, the only thing we changed, was what the state statute allows. Am I correct?
That is correct. So, the statutes do allow a couple provisions that local municipalities can enact. We did, in fact, enact the most stricted, restrictive, restrictive provisions within statute, specifically for all new licensees as of July 1 of 2023. Existing licensees do have some carve-out provisions that allow them to rent it out for fewer than six consecutive nights for that first year, and then they are also not required to maintain a 180 consecutive day period. They can rent it out for a total of 180 days, they do not need to run consecutively. So, again, that's for existing licensees. The other provision within the statutes that does provide some leniency is the provision that individuals that claim that property as their primary residence are not bound by some of those same provisions as well.
I've got, I've gotten so many articles on, I mean, it's throughout the country, as I, as I stated to one of our representatives the other day. This is, this is a bigger issue than Ashwabanen and Green Bay, it's throughout the country, so, anyway. Joel.
I, I just want to thank staff for holding those meetings that I requested and that, and gathering this information. It's kind of aligns with, I think, some of our thinking of what we thought, but I also feel that it's very early. I don't think it's still, the short-term rental owners, I don't think 100% still know what the entire impact is and, and some of the things that they, and how they can work through the ordinance. But thank you very much for the time and effort to put this together, and I will make a motion to file this.
Can I just ask one quick question?
I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Go ahead, Tracy.
Can you tell me how many short-term rental operators were grandfathered for this year? That next year, was it 20, was it 80, was it 100?
50. I just asked Patty today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
50, yeah.
50.
50, 50 that were in good standing from last year that.
Okay, so, if indeed, we looked at in the future, saying, we're going to grandfather them longer, the most that would be allowed would be, that would be 50, because they're the ones that are in right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If we wanted to do that, what's, what's the procedure to do that?
Essentially, we would just amend the ordinance to strike that sunset provision. There's a paragraph in the ordinance that sets kind of a sunset date for July 1, 2024. We would just strike that, those few words within the ordinance as part of the amendment, and that would simply eliminate that provision.
And that would only allow the ones that are currently getting it, that would not open it up to anybody else then, correct?
Anyone that was previously licensed in good standing as of July, or June 30th of 2023.
Okay.
Would qualify, and that would be those 50 licensees.
Okay. So, Patrick, there's no, like, discriminatory claim that could be made or anything by the new people, is there? Like, if we would, let's say we do this, we grandfather the existing licensees so that they don't have to follow this new rule, and then the new people coming in, I just predict they're going to say, "What? You can't treat us differently than," you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, a, the new short-term rental licensees owners can make an argument like that, I think it'd be a little hard for us to have some kind of standing where you could see that having maybe some merit with that claim. There's grandfather provisions throughout, I don't know. There's grandfather provisions throughout, I don't know how many different ones we have in our, our own ordinance versus, I don't know how many other cities have grandfather provisions versus exempting current licensees. So it would, yeah, the village would be okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to receive in place on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10D. Presentation by Rukert Milkie on Phase 1 of Capital Improvement Plan. Steve Burr.
Hey, Mary. Tonight, Kevin Wagner from Rukert Milkie is here to give us some background on the presentation on a capital improvement plan. Back in 2021, the Village contracted with Rukert Milkie during the water utility rate, rate case effort. And then part of that spun into a capital improvement plan that is, is something that we will use moving forward, you know, the budget time and whatnot. One thing I would like to note before Kevin does his presentation, you know, the timing of this kind of lines up with the water transmission main project that was completed in 2005. You know, so the timing, as you'll see in the presentation, some of the institution of, or the startup of the CIP would, would begin roughly around 2027 to line up with the transmission main project coming offline. So with that, Kevin, if you want to, go ahead.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So again, I'm Kevin Wagner. I'm the office manager for our Green Bay office on 1400 Lombardi. And so I was involved with the water rate case and the CIP development as well. So. So looking at the, the general infrastructure for the Village on the water side of things. Joel, if you wouldn't mind advancing. Sorry. On the road network side of things, the Village has approximately 92 miles of centerline road. This doesn't count county highways or state highways. Of that roadway, approximately 90% is asphalt. The remaining 10% would be concrete. And about 95% is urbanized, which means curb and gutter and storm sewer versus 5% is rural, which would be gravel shoulders, ditching, and culverts. Typically, the estimated road life for asphalt roadways is about 20 to 30 years, and for a concrete roadway, about 50 to 70 years. On the water side of things, the Village has about 107 miles of water main. And so some of this is under county highways or state highway. So it's a bit, that adds to the extended length beyond the road length. From an age perspective, about 5% of the mains were installed prior to 1960. Some of the mains that were installed, the first install in the Village have been replaced with some projects in the northeast part of the Village over the past two years. Approximately 30% of the mains in the Village were installed between 1961 and 1970, another 30% between 1971 and 1980, and the remaining after 1981. So a very significant amount of main has been installed between 1961 and 1970, about 60%. And typically, for an estimated road life for water main, or estimated life for water mains, about 75 to 100 years. And so quite a bit of water main that'll be hitting its end of life or starting to hit that pretty soon. And so approximately 40% of the main will hit 75 years by 2045, and approximately 60% by 2065, I believe. So in terms of maintenance practices right now within the Village for the roadway, there are two main practices. The first would be mill pave, where the existing asphalt is removed and replaced with a new service and binder course of asphalt. And this is used with a lot of projects where there isn't any utility required or no major changes to the roadway. The other major rehabilitation practice is reconstruction, where you'll look at removing the existing asphalt, the existing base beneath the roadway, and then also the utility repairs as needed. And oftentimes, this matches up with reconfiguration of the roadway. If you're widening the roadway, so there'll be curb and gutter replacement, and it ends up being a much more significant expense. But you're typically redoing the roadway entirely. So there's a potential for other types of rehabilitation within the Village. So something like crack sealing, which is very cost-effective. It's typically done within the first few roads of a new road being installed, or first few years of a new roadway being installed. And so you'll do crack sealing to keep water out of the roads, and you can significantly increase the life of a roadway with a very cost-effective technique. So that's something we'll typically recommend as much as possible. And then also things like a slurry seal, where you're waterproof the road coat, the road surface itself, a mill and overlay that's partial depth to just removing the top layer of asphalt and replacing it before the lower layer gets deteriorated, and will typically be less than half the cost of a regular mill pave, and things like a pulverized overlay. So there are other practices that we recommend the Village consider using a bit more widespread. In terms of the current Village practices for water, the majority of this is through the existing facilities, inspection and maintenance of the towers, pump stations, reservoirs, and then addressing water main breaks as they occur within the system. So as a pressure system, there's not a lot of maintenance you're doing on the water system. And the Village has been in a maintenance mode ever since they started installing utilities. They're now starting to reach the point where those utilities are going to need to be replaced. And so you're going to have to transition into more of a replacement cycle versus the maintenance you've been able to do. So that's a significant cost that's going to be coming into place for the water, the sewer, and the storm system. And that was one of the major concerns that kind of drove the CIP in the first place. And looking at the next 45 years for water main replacement, it's about $40 million in improvements on the water side of things for water main that'll be hitting 100 years of life. And you're going to start seeing issues with that water main. More main breaks, more issues that are going to be much more costly to repair in the field versus doing replacement on a regular basis.
Is that $40 million just count for the water main? Or would that be reconstruction of the road over it, or?
Just the water main. Okay. So in terms of the drivers for the CIP, there were two main things. As Steve mentioned, the payoff of the transmission main debt is a major factor, that there's a little under $600,000 in annual payments that would be available to allocate to these capital improvements without any impact to rate payers within the Village. And so the, this was a pretty big driver in looking at this potential. And then there's a significant amount of water main that was installed in between 61 and 80 that's going to be hitting end of life very soon. And so there was concern about, what does that look like? How quickly are we going to need to replace that? Is that going to be a major cost to us that we're not, just not, the Village just isn't seeing yet at this point? And so trying to understand the full impact of what that replacement need was going to be. And looking at how those costs can be distributed over time. So in terms of the CIP, there were some main goals with that. The first was to assess the existing Village water main and road systems. So where were they at? What kind of condition they were in? And what it would cost to maintain those? The second was looking at, oh, sorry. I need to slide go. The second was looking at identifying critical water main replacement over the next 15 years. So water main was starting to hit its end of life, and so there was concern about what are the big needs? What needs to be addressed in the next 15 years that we want to include in this 10-year CIP? The next item was looking at how to prioritize different water main sections, different projects. So if you have 10 different sections of water main that are all hitting their end of life, how do you want to focus? What do you want to prioritize on based on other utilities within the corridor, the road condition, and things like that? Another priority was looking at what the 20- to 30-year replacement was going to look like on the water main side of things so that if a 10-year CIP is developed, you have twice as much water main that needs to be replaced in year 20 or year 30, trying to account for that to, to kind of spread things out over time. And then looking at an actual 10-year CIP that programs improvements by year with relatively accurate cost to be able to utilize for that planning. And then lastly, to forecast how the Village will pay for that CIP. What would the funding be? What impact would that be on rates for water customers? So as we did the assessment of, for the CIP, on the water main side of things, we used the extensive Village GIS system to determine what was the age of the water main, what was the condition, how many water main breaks there have been, and kind of verifying the data on what was out there for the existing system to be able to prioritize on what projects needed to be taken care of. And on the roadway side of things, we used the Whistler data provided by the state to match up deterioration of the roadways with the water main projects. So looking at, trying to do, if there's a water main improvement that'll occur, timing it when the, when the roadway is due for replacement instead of going in 10 years after you put a new roadway in. And then looking at the many different segments of water main to be replaced, we tried to group things together by corridor. So looking somewhere in the 3 to 10 blocks of, of projects, and then grouping things by either a single road or a neighborhood. So for example, for example, Coramere as an extent through the Village represents, I think, five or six different project corridors that we looked at. And then for the actual CIP itself, which I believe you've received, the 10-year CIP combines water main facility projects on the top with, or water facility projects on the top with water main and roadway projects on the bottom. And so it looks at, we took the Water Department's plan, schedule for facility improvements, and combined that with the projects that we had identified as part of this. And so we initially went through and prioritized projects by size of the pipe, the priority, the deterioration of the roadways. And then we worked with Steve and Brian to determine what was, made the most sense for the Village in terms of the improvements and how those should be organized. And so looking at the cost on the water side between the facilities and the water main projects, it worked out to be approximately $900,000 a year. And so between the water facility and the payoff with the transmission main, this roughly works about to be what we were kind of anticipating. And looking at the needs for the Village on the water main side of things, it's working out to be somewhere in the range of $1 million a year in replacement on water main if you're looking to try to keep up with that water main hitting its end of life. And from a project perspective, those projects work out to be about $3.8 million a year. And that's the water main, the sewer, the storm, the pavement, and then other roadway aspects for that. Okay? And then once we had the CIP plan in place, we looked at funding, what impact, what that would have. So whenever possible, we would do the typical 3% increase on water rates as necessary. And then I believe in 2029, there would be a 12% increase in rates. And then in 2033, there'd be 11% increase in rates. So how would this affect the water users? And you'd be able to see what that impact would be. So it wouldn't be an unknown on that. For the second part of the forecast, we were looking at what the long-term cost would be and projections for all the water main that will be hitting end of life. So anything that was installed prior to 1970. So this runs from 2026, 2027 to 2066, I believe. And so things are grouped by 10-year windows. But looking at what all those projects are and what will need to be replaced to be able to keep up with that, that water main hitting its end of life. And so on the next slide, you can kind of see an exhibit that shows when the Village water main will be hitting that end of life throughout the Village. So it's going to continue to grow and grow. So as this, as you get closer to the year 2100, this is actually going to increase. And so if the Village can start addressing this on a regular basis, they'll be able to keep up with it at decent pace and be able to work through. All of these are in 2023 costs as well. So there's going to be inflation. There are going to be other things that'll take place in construction costs. And so it's a pretty significant transition from maintenance into replacement of maintenance out there. And so between that 2026 to 2070 timeframe, which is that long-term CIP, it's looking about $40 million in water main replacement, and then the next 30 years, about $70 million. So for the next phase of the CIP, it would be looking at the sanitary and storm sewer more in-depth to determine what is actually out there. We use rough costs on those for, at this point. And then coming back to look and see, okay, what's actually out there? What's the priority for those projects? And to better understand what the actual cost will be for sanitary and, and storm. We'd also look at wrapping in fleet costs, so vehicle replacement, as well as trying to determine what the long-term funding would be for the water utility, for the general fund, and for other utilities as well. So, sorry, I kind of breezed through that, but any questions?
Any questions for Kevin? That's a lot of millions.
I think our next generation is going to have some big expenses on water.
So you have to replace the whole main? You can't just, like, put a sleeve inside there to repair it or extend the life of it, or?
So you can do lining for storm and sanitary. That's used quite a bit more. For water main, that's not typically used unless you absolutely need to. It doesn't work as well, and you'll eventually have to replace that pipe anyways. And there can be issues if you're doing the lining.
Any other questions? Steve, comments?
Just one thing to add. Appreciate Kevin, you coming in tonight to the meeting. As we move forward into the budget season coming up here, you know, Brian and I will bring some of this forward, but this is kind of the driving force for budget discussions, you know, in the future. So a lot, lot, obviously, a lot to digest tonight. But that wasn't, it was more just to, you know, make you guys aware of where the Village is heading. We could get information out for you guys to, to review it. If you got questions, by all means, you know, hit us up. But thank you.
I, I've talked many different times with Steve and Brian about, you know, once the, the money that we borrowed for the connection to Green Bay water is when we're going to plan on starting the borrowing to start replacing some of our, our main, so.
I had a question ironically from one of the residents wondering about the water standpipe on Ridge Road. So the one located between Wabi and Circle. And she had heard rumors that it was coming down. I'm like, really? That's a new one for me. So I talked to Brian, and that is part evidently, and maybe Steve can address this more, of what this study is looking at, at some of our towers as well and the distribution of water, is what Brian had explained.
Yeah, so that, you know, that, it's a standpipe, it's more for storage. It's really not utilized right now. So there is, you know, investigation if, if we need to keep it in service or take it out of service. But that's not anything immediate. You know, I know we did resurface that, say, the parking lot for the well there. That was more out of necessity because there's a retaining wall there. It was having some issues. Water was getting behind it. There's still a well in that building there that will stay in service. So I know there was concern with you guys are taking that standpipe down, why are you replacing the asphalt? But there was more of an immediate need, more with the retained wall in the service of that site.
Yes, and I did share that with the resident, that the reason they paved it and the talk is of removing it was because of those things. So I appreciate Brian getting back to me on that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin. Did a great job. Okay. 10E. Consider, discuss, act on recommended amendments to Village of Ashwabnon Employee Handbook, Section 4.13 Holidays, 4.14-2 Sick Leave to Vacation Conversion, 5.10 Work Schedule Hours of Operation and Meal Breaks, 5.08.1 Dress Code. Joel.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. There are four areas of our employee handbook that we reviewed this past year for possible amendments. As you may recall, we updated our, our handbook comprehensively last year. And as part of that update, committed to annually reviewing the handbook and making amendments on an annual basis so that it stays up-to-date to current practices and lawful components of human resources management. The four proposals that you have before you today are more just language cleanup and operational changes to the overall administration of the Village. The first one in your cover memo from staff is related to Section 4.13, and that's holidays. With this particular amendment, we are not proposing to make any changes per se to holidays. So the holidays that are observed, the number of holidays that are provided are not changing. We are simply seeking clarification on the amount of hours that an employee would receive in relation to having the observed holiday off. And that is clarified with just retweaking some of the language within that section in the handbook, which was included in your packet under the highlighted portion, as well as providing a new appendices to the handbook that would be Appendix C. So it provides over the next five years, the observed holidays in accordance to policy, and the number of hours that an employee would receive in relation to the hours that would typically have been worked on that day. Those hours are directly related to and attributed to changes to Section 5.10, which relates to work schedules, hours of operation, and meal breaks. In this regard, we are proposing to update our general operating hours for Village administrative offices here at Village Hall, the community center, as well as our field staff hours for public works, parks, recreation, and forestry staff. Under that provision under 510, we are looking to make permanent the, I guess, subtle change that we had last summer where we work a longer day, Monday through Thursday, with a shortened Friday. One of the changes that we are proposing as part of this section as opposed to how we operated this last summer is that our field staff will we operated this last summer, is that our field staff will actually, instead of work what has traditionally been the hours that our administrative staff had worked, is working basically for eight-and-a-half-hour days, Monday through Thursday, with a six-hour day on Friday. If you recall last, last year when we updated our handbook, one of the concerns was that there wasn't sufficient time on Fridays to prepare for the weekend activities, particularly in our park system. In talking with Rex and his staff, we feel that that work can be accommodated in a six-hour shift on a Friday, with some prioritization on what needs to be done then, Monday through Thursday. And so those field staff would essentially work those eight-and-a-half-hour days, Monday through Thursday, with a six-hour day on Friday, that would really kind of give them that feeling of a half-day on Friday. The hour changes were a substantial morale boost for all of our staff that enjoyed those. And when we went back to regular hours after our trial, if you will, after Labor Day, there was a substantial decrease in morale, I would say, and potential mutiny in the office. And so I feel obligated to present this option to you for that purpose. In addition to that, we reviewed what other communities are doing. In fact, Ashwabhanan and the City of Green Bay were the only two communities that had that hybrid system, where you had regular operating hours between Labor Day and Memorial Day, and summer hours between Memorial Day and Labor Day. Other communities around us, such as Aloe, DePere, Howard, Swamaco, Lawrence, Wrightstown, Plasky, all of them, with the exception of Hobart, have that year-round kind of modified schedule of longer, Monday through Thursday, half-day Friday. In addition to that, under Section 5.08.1, that is just a clarifier, we currently provide boot allowances for employees that are required to wear reinforced toe, and that is up to $200. Our original handbook language unintentionally excluded building inspectors to that mix, and so we are clarifying that language for that purpose. And then finally, one of the conversations that came up as part of our internal review is the idea of being able to convert unused sick leave for long-tenured employees that have accrued their maximum amount of sick leave into vacation. One of the things that we've been finding is that there may be some employees, and we speculate, of course, that may be taking sick leave in lieu of taking vacation because they recognize they will no longer be able to accrue any additional sick leave because they've maximized their accrual. They may take a day off here or there and claim that they're sick. I suppose we could certainly request a doctor's note, but if somebody has the flu for a day and they have a fever and they call in sick, most likely they're not going to the doctor to get a note to verify that. So one of the counters to that is to provide an incentive for employees to not abuse their sick leave, use it when it's appropriate and necessary. And then in doing so, any unused sick leave days would then be converted to, a portion of, I should say, would be converted to vacation to then be used the next year. And that kind of gives them that opportunity to do so. This is a practice that we presently provide to our public safety staff. It was a provision that had been provided to our non-exempt employees prior to January 1 of 2013. At some point, it was eliminated, and it's really kind of gone back and forth on this idea. And so essentially, what we're looking to do is eliminate or strike that January 1, 2013 provision, and allow any employees that, non-exempt employees that have acquired their sick leave accrual to convert that time. At present, under the current policy as it's written, we have one employee that qualifies for that conversion based on their accruals. If we eliminate the January 1, 2013 date, we have 15 employees that then would qualify for that. So out of 125 full-time employees, it is a pretty minimal number. Again, it would take about 10 years of time to accrue the number of sick leave hours to even qualify for the program. So to some degree, it is rewarding longevity for those employees to gain, essentially, the opportunity to gain an additional week of vacation. So with that, this item was presented to Finance and Personnel Committee last week, and the changes were recommended for approval from committee. And I will answer any questions.
Not a question, but just to let people who weren't at the Finance Committee meeting know that, at that meeting, Joel indicated that the number of hours that you're open is the same under both schedules, but you found that you're actually more responsive to the community with the modified schedule because there's hours that are available before 8:00, so people can stop on their way to work and things like that, so.
That is correct. So yes, we are open earlier in the morning, so individuals that want to be able to come in, fill out a building permit, or register for a program or a class at Park and Rec, they are now able to do that because we're open before 8:00 AM. In addition to that, on, on the operating side, having earlier garbage and recycling pickup, pickup has proven to be very, very efficient for us. In the previous scenario, we were picking up an hour later, and as a result of that, we were getting to the transfer site an hour later, and we happened to be hitting it right at the peak time of all other haulers and municipalities entering the transfer station. So our operators were sitting in line waiting to dump their load, and it would take anywhere from 45 to 60 minutes to do that, sitting in a truck, idle, being paid, of course. What we found is by starting an hour earlier, we beat that afternoon rush, we're in and out, and our, our operators are able to come back and do other projects for at least another two to three hours every day outside of just collecting garbage and recycling.
So in short, it'll make our staff much more happier.
I hope so.
That's our job.
One thing I mentioned at Finance Personnel also was the 6:30 AM start time for our public works and our field workers, and the concern of them being out in the dark in the winter, because it's going to be dark then. And Brian did address that, but I think it's just something we need to be aware of and make sure that we're not having more accidents or incidents because of the darkness when they're working, so just to kind of keep track of that.
I'll move to amend the Village of Ashwabhanan Employee Handbook, Sections 4.13 Holidays, 4.14.2 Sick Leave to Vacation Conversion, 5.10 Work Schedules, Hours of Operation and Meal Breaks, and 5.08.1 Dress Code as provided.
Second. Hey, we have a motion and a second to do what Kelly and Tracy just said. I'm not going to repeat it. I said it once already. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Thank you. 10F, Consider Discuss Act on Proposed Changes to the Village of Ashwabhanan Organization Chart. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. So really quickly, one of the things that we're working to do on your agendas is to create kind of uniform language on the action items. So as it says, Consider Discuss Act, it is any of those three or a combination thereof. We are not seeking any action from the board tonight on this particular item, so it's more just consideration and discussion. The proposed organizational chart that's presented to you in your packet was presented at Finance and Personnel last week. The intent and purpose of presenting this draft organizational chart is to get ahead of you prior to budget, the formal budget process of reviewing the budget for 2024. Recognizing staffing, wages, and benefits are our largest expense within the overall budget, we wanted you to be aware of the proposed additions that our department heads have submitted to us administratively in consideration of the budget. And in doing so, we're adding some transparency to that factor. We've heard in the past that oftentimes, maybe proposals that department heads had provided never made its way to the village board for consideration, and that, again, is the, the point and purpose of presenting this to you tonight, is just that there are a number of positions that have been included as part of the budget. They do need to be vetted. At some point, Mary, Greg, myself will go through the budget with each department head, prioritize those positions, and those that, that we feel are a priority will be presented to you as part of the executive budget. But you will know that other positions will have been submitted, and we will provide our basis for why we recommended what we did in our proposed executive budget for the board and committee's consideration. And in addition to that, I believe it was Trustee Krieger that said it would be nice to kind of see the big picture, and this is, this is the big, big picture, and that there have been efforts made internally between all the department heads to talk about staffing and how they relate to one another and some of the changes that we have. So real quickly, there are a few subtle changes that we are looking to make on the upper end of the organizational chart related to the village manager's office, village attorney's office, the clerk, and the assessor. So one quick request that we will be making is to convert our contracted human resources effort to an on-staff in-house HR generalist. So we'll be looking to basically convert what we spend in contracted services over to an in-house HR generalist. Second, there will be some impending changes, retirements, over the next year to two years, so as those occur, we are making some subtle changes. One of those is related directly to the assessor area. With the change in, in personal property tax not, no longer being accounted for at the local level, we likely will not need a full-time assessment technician to conduct that work. That is, the vast majority of their effort is related to personal property tax. That going away, we are looking to retool that position to be more of a function of the clerk's office. So this, this individual will play a role in the assessor's office by being a liaison and assisting the assessor from an administrative standpoint. We figure it'd be no more than a quarter of their time, the rest of their time would be devoted to the clerk's office. The incumbent in our current assessment technician position is likely to retire in the next few months, so when that retirement happens, that's when the, the conversion would, would occur. Moving on then, down to the lower part of the org chart, there are a number of positions that are being requested. There are two in public works. One is an engineering technician. You will find out a little bit more in detail about what that position will be responsible for. All told, however, we currently contract for inspection services through our engineering consultants. That's the work that an engineering technician does, and what we pay in contracted services to our consultants would more than cover the wage and benefits of the engineering technician. Plus, we get the added benefit of having somebody in-house to do all the other projects that, that need to be completed. So you'll see that being kind of a, a near-net neutral expense to the, to the budget. In addition to that, there is a proposal to look to have a facility maintenance technician added to the staff. At present, our public works, street crew, kind of maintain the, the buildings in and around Village Hall here, and so looking to add somebody on staff to assist in that effort, because as the building ages, it, it is becoming a little bit more cumbersome. Gary, you'd be happy to know that we are proposing a full-time code enforcement officer as part of the 2024 budget, so that is in there as well.
I was waiting for those magic words.
It's there. I was waiting for the end to tell you.
Only 15 years ago.
Okay. It's there, so it's on you now that it gets in the budget, right?
And we're going to do a height restriction in two weeks. And you'll...
We have a requested Parks and Forestry Maintenance Labor Position, so that's adding an additional labor to that side. Our IT Network Tech Director or Manager is looking for a network specialist there. Again, that's an added position. And then within Public Safety, we are looking for what will be essentially three positions, although one of those three positions has been kind of vacated and held open as we evaluate that. So the three positions that Public Safety is looking towards is adding an additional commander to that, adding an investigator to Investigations Division, and then that third position, if you will, is essentially retooling of our, our civilian fire inspector role into a sworn PSO that will be called the Community Risk Reduction Officer. Again, department heads were present at Finance and Personnel and went through these in a little bit more detail for the sake of time. Again, wanted to present to you the, the proposed positions. These will come up in the budget, and they will be identified as either being included or excluded from the financials of the budget, and then at that point, the board can decide and have discussions about priority.
A quick question to refresh my memory. Did we add more officers this year? Didn't we add?
We added three additional sworn officers to Public Safety this year.
And now they want to add, how many again?
So this particular one is a little bit different. So our PSOs that we added last year were line officers. Now, it's taken probably close to the full year to get them on staff, and so recruitment has been a challenge. So those were line officers. This coming year, we're looking to add a commander, so it's an additional supervisory position. We were looking at an investigator, so in all likelihood, an existing PSO would advance to that investigator role. And then the Community Risk Reduction Officer will be a sworn PSO. So again, that's probably going to be a position filled by an incumbent officer, and then we would more or less hire a new PSO.
Any other comments?
The other thing is in the code enforcement, I believe going forward, that it's great that we're going to have a full-time, but I think we even need more than that. And I know Mary's, we've had some discussion about the possibility of Green Bay of sharing, especially with the short-term rental situation, and that I'd really like to see that bumped up a little bit. Additionally, and I know, Joel, you're going to remember this, because I feel that Aaron needs more help. I feel that we need Aaron to kind of be in a position where he can be looking at things like we were talking about tonight. I mean, we obviously had, with the height restrictions and things like that, you aren't getting the time to look at Ashwabhanan and say, what are the things that, as the community is growing, that we need to, within an ordinance, be able to deal with? I recognize you're not getting the time to do that. I feel like we need Aaron to be able to do that and have somebody else to be handling these phone calls from developers and other things like that. You may recall, when we were doing strategic planning, I was making reference to this. I just think it's so necessary, because otherwise, we sit here tonight and we get hit with this, and yeah, we really, yeah, a, a study needs to be done, but we haven't had that chance, we haven't got ahead of the curve, and that's, you know, I'm not throwing stones at Aaron, who knows I'm not. I just think he needs more help so he can do that type of work. I get it's another person, I get it increased budget, but I just think it's something that we have to do as this village is growing. I think we really need that focus. I feel the, again, the riverfront, I think there's things to be done down there, where we're, the residents are being forced in, we have to go up, there's all kinds of ordinance that we got to start to really think about and plan going forward so that, as developers are coming in, we got our ducks in a row and can, and can do what the residents want. So I feel we need, in the community development area, I feel we need additional help.
I think Aaron, Aaron can certainly speak to it. We can certainly talk a little bit more offline internally and then provide an example of what, what that would look like position-wise, as far as providing that type of support that, that, that you're speaking to, Jay. Off the top of my head, or off the cuff, I would say maybe an assistant planner, a zoning administrator, something to that effect, that would kind of focus on those initiatives. We do have a comprehensive plan update that needs to be done, too, and that's going to be some time, so.
Right.
We'll be kicking it off probably in January or February with a, a community meeting. So I've lined up some assistance with that, but we'll be doing that in-house. Did do an RFP for that. The numbers came back honestly too high for what a comprehensive plan should cost. I've done probably 30 of them in my career, so I certainly know what they cost. I'm confident we can get it done, but certainly it'll take me away from kind of those day-to-day things that we'll have to let, hopefully, this new person, as, as well as Katie and whoever else we can help out.
Yeah, and that's to my point. I just feel like you need, you need some help, you need some helping hands in order to allow you, to free you up for those very, very important things that need to be done.
I, I agree, I agree with that, Jay. You know, I just said to Joel the other day, you know, with, with everything that's happening in the village, I think we really have to be very, very strategic in, in our planning. I really do.
We have the right person, we just got to get him to be able to do the right work and not do some of the other stuff.
He is so busy. He's so busy.
Exactly.
Aaron, can Brown County do the comprehensive plan? Do they do those? I mean, without a cost, like they do some other plans for communities?
So unfortunately, I did have them in line to take that on. Due to staffing cuts and budget... Due to staffing cuts and budget shortfalls, they had to drop that service. So they will still, for for a few adult beverages, I did coax them into helping me out with the visioning session. So I will not expense that. I'll take that on myself, Greg. But certainly, they'll they'll help me out with that, and I appreciate their help.
Anything else? Otherwise, that is that. Stay tuned. Okay. 10G, consider discuss act on building inspector position updates and authorization to proceed with recruitment hiring of position. Joel.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. As you may know and in reading your packet, David Busco had resigned his position as Senior Building Inspector with the Village of Ashwabanon on September 5th. His last day was on September 15th, so we are out without a second building inspector. As you know, going throughout the community, we have a number of projects that are ongoing that require substantial efforts for building inspection. And so we've asked Al Farver, our Utility Operations Supervisor, to assist us, in particular with some plumbing inspections in that interim period. With that and talking with Aaron and his staff team, we feel that it would be appropriate to allow us an opportunity to kind of expand, if you will, our our recruiting efforts by kind of retooling the positions. So one of the effects that we would like to do is essentially kind of take the senior building inspector and just make it a building inspector, but have the capability of working between wages between a building inspector and a senior building inspector. That way, we have a larger net that we can then cast and hopefully recruit or solicit a number of applications that may or may not have all of the complete credentials on the front end and that we can train and provide that opportunity for an individual if if the right individual presents themselves for that role. In addition to that, one of the things that that we found with with David and the prior transition between Eric and David is that Katie Lima has been exceptional for our village and for our organization. She's performed her job extremely well and has taken on kind of a mentoring role with our building inspection division. And so we ultimately want to reward that opportunity and recognize the fact that they are performing kind of in that leadership capacity when it comes to building inspection. Katie was instrumental in things like getting ePlan exam, getting through that process, getting David essentially onboard and online and and really kind of managing and navigating that whole process of of inspection and plan review. And so in doing so, what we would like is to reclassify Katie from Senior Building Inspector to Chief Building Inspector and provide her an opportunity in more written form that she would then be that leader or manager supervisor of the other inspector. And in doing so, she would be reclassified to a higher grade level to account for that. And so what we are seeking tonight from the board is approval to 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 two things. One, reclassify Katie's position to the Chief Building Inspector, moving that from grade 10 to grade 11, and then also authorizing the village to essentially advertise and solicit applications for the vacant building inspector position so that we can get that filled as soon as possible.
Joe, I don't have a problem with what you're talking about, but is this the first time in a hiring practice it's ever come to the village board like this?
Normally, it would be handled internally, but because we are reclassifying the position, we are seeking board approval to do that in accordance to our policy.
All right, I'll move to approve the position. Second, and the advertisement needed.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the inspector position update and authorization to proceed with recruitment hiring. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to say that Katie does do a really good job. I do appreciate her in that position when I have to deal with her. It's seamless, so very well appreciated.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10H, consider discuss act on a contracted board for the Alden Station Pedestrian Trail Project.
So this is the famous Alden Station Trail. Talked about it a few times, but we are moving forward. We did solicit bids and did receive three bids, the lowest being $205,443.20 from Advanced Construction, Inc. They are utility contractors, but they do grading work. They will be subbing the paving work to MCC. So then those both those companies have done work in the village before, so no qualms about working with them on this project. So before you is consideration on awarding the contract to them in that stated amount.
What's the timing, Steve, that they're gonna start this project and do it?
Yep, so we do have a pre-con schedule for this Thursday, so we'll get that schedule from them. We anticipate probably the week of October 9th, so it'll be this fall. So they do, we have a completion date probably, you know, basically before the cold weather, you know, set sense, they get the paving done this fall.
So the paving will be done this fall, yeah?
Correct. Yep.
All right, I'll move to approve the Advanced Construction to do the project as you presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Advanced Construction.
Under discussion. One quick question. Steve, what was the estimated cost for the project? Did we have one? Did it come in?
It came, actually came in below. I think it was about 230, so it was pretty close.
Okay. And I was just wondering with bids being so high, where it fell on that?
Yep.
Thank you.
And this one is for $205,443.20. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10I, consider discuss act on an intergovernmental agreement for traffic signal maintenance with the City of Green Bay.
So, yeah, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but the village has 11 signalized intersections that we are in charge of, I guess. In the past, it's been since I've been here, you know, Brown County, and probably goes dates back to when the signals went in, you know, Brown County Highway Department was contracted to maintain those. You know, if there's light bulbs out, if a car runs, you know, runs a pull over, that type of thing. So they have the expertise, you know, they have the the parts, the electricians to take care of those. Unfortunately, the staff at Brown County, as far as the electricians, have either retired or left. So Brown County informed us that they will no longer maintain our signals. They're having a hard time just taking care of their own. So we've reached out to, you know, different electricians and also the City of Green Bay. And fortunately, the the City of Green Bay has agreed, and this is the agreement brought to you tonight, has agreed to basically take over the maintenance on our signals should something happen. So definitely a good thing. And a little tidbit is one of the electricians that was at Brown County currently works for Green Bay, so we do have a good working relationship with that person. So wanted to bring this forward and the recommendation to execute this intergovernmental agreement with the City of Green Bay.
Steve, is this done on a per-call basis and an hourly basis?
It is, yep. Yep. So they would, you know, if we call, notify them, they would, you know, come on site, and then whatever time it took them, whatever parts they use, they would send us an invoice.
Okay. I guess we don't have a choice. So I'll move to approve the agreement agreement with Green Bay.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement for traffic signal maintenance with the City of Green Bay. Any other questions?
One quick question, sorry. Steve, I'd asked you at the beginning about this, but it sounds in the contract that if we have Eagle or Siemens traffic control device, we have to change them out within a year or so, otherwise they will not be able to maintain them. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So that's, those brands are kind of becoming obsolete, so I think Green Bay's in the process of doing the same thing. So I know Brian in the CIP in but future budgets is kind of phasing what we currently have out and replacing with new.
So do you have an estimated cost at all for that? Is that a big expense or?
Oh, yeah.
Or don't you?
Yeah, I don't know offhand.
I do believe it was somewhat sizable. I don't believe that he's looking at, in the CIP, replacing them all within the next year. It's over a five-year period.
Yeah, period time.
Now, of course, if one fails, we'll have to replace it kind of as an emergency repair. And I believe it was around $25,000 per intersection, but.
I would think all that, yeah.
So it's a it's a decent amount of money.
So does that include a camera system at the intersections, do you know? Or is it just strictly the lights and the?
To my understanding, this expense is just replacing the motherboard, the control board that manages the lighting system, the the pedestrian pad pads, the red, yellow, green lights. That's all that that's doing. It's not necessarily replacing the light fixtures or adding other features, just the control board.
Okay.
The cabinet, you know, the the guts of the cabinet you see in the corner.
Yep. All right.
And just kind of a point of clarification on the agreement, Tracy. So I reviewed it and I discussed it with with Steve and Brian as well with regarding that, the equipment kind of transferred to the updated models, like I suppose, for lack of a better term. But the agreement is more along the lines of the Green Bay is transitioning out of that. And then once they're fully transitioned out, they're going to give the village notice within a year of when they should start, when they should start transitioning out of the Eagle software, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the issue becomes too is, you know, they have spare parts, right? And as you phase this equipment, I want to get new equipment, then you start getting rid of that old equipment type of thing, so.
Right, so it's not necessarily within a year we have to transition out.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, so it's, we have a year.
As soon as they're ready, they're gonna give us notice, and then we'll start moving towards that.
Moving forward. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve that intergovernmental agreement. Any other comments? Bring down. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10J, consider discuss act on an intergovernmental cooperative agreement to satisfy eligibility for the Wisconsin Recycling Consolidation Grant for calendar year 2024. Steve Burke.
Yes, this basically is something I believe that has been brought forward yearly in the past. It's basically, you know, requests for municipalities to provide guidance to, you know, the residents, you know, educational guidance on recycling. The village has a link, a hyperlink on our website that, you know, directs, you know, residents to this information. So just something that we wanted to bring forward to village board, you know, for for approval.
I see about every other community around here is on here.
That is correct, yep.
Okay. All right. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the intergovernmental cooperative agreement to satisfy eligibility for the Recycling Consolidation Grant. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10K, consider discuss act on information related to the regulation of motorized bicycle, electric personal assistive devices, ATVs and other vehicles, including neighborhood electric vehicles, scooters, et cetera. Joel.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. So at the request of Trustee Zerbal, he had requested information regarding village ordinances and statutory language related to motorized bicycles, electric personal assistive devices, ATVs, other vehicles that are motorized, in particular scooters. It seems to be.
Does this include segways? Because I was told I can't ride my segways on the street, but seeing everybody else has electric motorized vehicles, I think I should be able to do that now.
I, it would be to my understanding that a Segway would be included in the mix of what is regulated in the Village of Ashwabanon. It does not say Segway, but it does say an electronic vehicle, and it would qualify as that, to my understanding. So with that, this item was also presented to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee this past month at the request of Trustee Flukie to kind of talk through what what does the village regulate, what does it not regulate? And so included in your packet is chapter or Article 7 of our municipal code that deals with this particular topic. I do want to point out that there are a few definitions that we we do need to identify. First, in our code book, we identify what is called a neighborhood electric vehicle. That is not a scooter. That is not a one-wheel. That is not a motorized bicycle. So a neighborhood electric vehicle or NEV would be kind of like a really fancy golf cart, if you will. Okay? So a lot oftentimes, they have a cab, a steering wheel, four wheels, it's electric-driven motor, and they are regulated to drive at a maximum speed of between 20 and 25 miles per hour. I don't recall that we see too many NEVs running around the the village, so.
No, I have not seen one, Joel. But it basically is, looks like a like a miniature car, has turn signals and everything like that, and the golf cart doesn't have that.
Right. So that that particular definition was added to our code back in 20, or 2006? So I'm guessing there was a fear back then that these things were gonna run rampant, and the village decided at that time that it needed to regulate it. So you've done a good job because they're, they don't exist, I guess. Gary, did you have a quick question?
No, I'll let you continue on.
Okay. The other component is this concept of motorized bicycles, motorized scooters, other electric personal assistive devices, maybe all-terrain vehicles, golf carts, things of that nature. Within Wisconsin State statute, under the Traffic Code 346, it allows for municipalities to add additional more restrictive language for those devices on things like sidewalks, bikeways, pedestrian paths, trails, things of that nature. The village has gone ahead and added language within our municipal code, adding further restrictions. And this dates back to 2017. So those types of vehicles, the scooters that you see, those electric battery-operated scooters, the bicycles, things of that nature, they are not permitted under village code to operate on sidewalks, trails, or or the like. Okay? They operate there, but they're they're technically not allowed to. In addition to that, those types of devices, vehicles, things of that nature, if they are not registered for the use on highways or roadways in accordance to Wisconsin Department of Motor Vehicles, they are not permitted to be used on a village street within the Village of Ashwabanon. Okay? That is with the exception of roads that are under the 35 miles per hour. So if the roadway is posted at 35 miles an hour or greater, they are not allowed. If it is posted at a lower speed, they are permitted under Wisconsin State statute. It should also note that within our own code, we've identified as parents, guardians, or other persons responsible for any child under 16 years of age. They are ultimately responsible for the conduct and actions of the children under their care. Okay? So there are provisions within the enforcement portion of this chapter that gets into communicating and having conversations with parents, guardians, and other responsible persons. So with that, within Wisconsin State statutes, within the Traffic Code beyond that, generally speaking, motorized bicycles act and should, and users of those bicycles should operate them no differently than what a bicycle should operate as. Okay? So they have the same rights and responsibilities as a bicycle under Chapter 346. A scooter, an electric scooter, to my understanding, is of that same nature. Okay? They can operate like a bicycle. They have to follow some of the same rules. They have the same rights and responsibilities. But there are also provisions within there, within Traffic Code that also carves out rights or responsibilities of those users as pedestrians. So there, there's a little bit of some modifications and some carve-outs and callouts to that. So with that, we have at present enacted ordinances that further regulate and restrict the uses of these types of devices. And at this point, the proliferation of usage of these devices is really kind of systemic to societal changes. They're becoming very popular. They're add mobility for individuals, particularly that are under the driving age. And so we see a lot of high school young adults, 14, 15, maybe 16-year-olds that don't have their driver's license, using them as really quick, rapid transportation options. And so if the village desires to make any modifications or changes to the provisions of this statute, it would need to comply with the allowances within the Wisconsin State statutes or simply just these individual users have to abide with the Traffic Code. Patrick, Chief and I, we met, we kind of walked through this together before. Patrick, Chief, and I, we met, we kind of walked through this together before today's meeting, and at this point, it really kind of comes down to an enforcement matter and how much time and effort do we want to dedicate our public safety officers in enforcing the traffic code as it relates specifically with these types of users?
What I was going to say is that they don't follow the rules that we have now, so why, I mean, why put more rules on them? Because they're not going to follow those rules either, is the way I feel about it.
Agreed.
You know? Everybody up here can, you know, the scooters, I mean, I just, Sunday, the scooter went flying through my parking lot and almost got hit by a big truck and, you know, just didn't even care. So, they don't follow the rules now, so.
No, they don't. And I mean, one of our Bike Pad Committee members had asked us to be placed on the committee, and her concern was, they don't understand. And I think part of it is not only having the proper ordinances in place, but trying to educate. And you're right, Mary, they may not listen, it may not change anything anyway, but at least if we can get the word out that yes, electric scooters have to be handled in this manner, bikes have to be ridden in this manner, maybe that will help a little bit, but it may not either. But I would ask Patrick, looking at our ordinances, does it address electric bicycles in this ordinance, would you say? And the three levels of electric bicycles, they have the ones, twos, and threes, do we need to address that in there to properly regulate them?
I think it was included, and if I'm not mistaken, that we had electric bicycles in, as far as the definitions of where they can and can't go, or as far as the definition of regulating electric bicycles, where they can operate.
Yeah, I mean, are they mentioned in our ordinance? Is this the only section of our ordinance, or do we have another section that specifically talks about electric bicycles?
Right, chapter seven, yeah, chapter seven where it would be included.
I don't know that it necessarily calls out specifically electric bicycles like it does within the traffic code. So, under 346 of the traffic code, it says specifically electric bicycles, whereas our particular, chapter seven says motor bicycle.
Right.
So, I think by interpretive use of the code, that's how we would look at it. It's an electric motor, whether it's an electric motor, gas motor, it's a motor-driven bicycle, and so, it would still meet those requirements. If necessary, or we feel that it would be important, we could certainly amend the code to be even further specific and drill down to state specifically electric bicycles to coincide with traffic code. That certainly would be reasonable to do.
And I think what Tracy pointed out, because I know when I read it, I had some of the same question. I wasn't sure that electric bicycles were actually called out, and the differences between the three types is very significant. Where type three, there's literally a throttle on it. And those are the ones that, to me, are fitting in here right now, even though we aren't calling them out. The other ones, you've still got to pedal them, you get assists, but there's no throttle on it. And I think, I think it would probably be good, just a little tweak to include that, Patrick, to get the, because that is the classification of the electric bikes right now, and that's, you know, that's the standard. So, I think it would be good if we called that out that way. I think it would just clarify it, because I'll admit, when I read it, I wasn't quite sure whether my bike was legal or not, even though I pedal it.
Well, and even the DNR, I mean, recs brought this up at our meeting as well. We have trails that we got funding from the DNR for our trails, and right now, I don't believe the DNR allows any kind of motorized vehicle except for like a flat wheelchair or something on there. And that needs to be clarified also, because I'm sure these, they're out on all the trails. And I know the Brown County is working on that right now with Fox River Trail in the Mountain Bay to try to get some clarification from the DNR in regard to that. So, I think that's something we need to keep in mind, too, if not in ordinance form, at least to educate people and say, this is what you should do, this is what you shouldn't do. Because some people, if you tell them what they should do, they will actually do it. And some people will disregard, you know, and they'll just do what they want anyway. But at least if we get the information out. So, maybe that's something to check into a little further, too, what...
I know in all state trails, you are not allowed to use a type three.
Right.
That's correct. So, we do have that right now.
They do not.
Yeah, they're not allowed on any rec trail. That is, if you interpret the motor bicycle to be an e-bike, we could specify that certainly to include an e-bike as a reference here to have that.
I think what maybe I would suggest for the board is if you would like to refer this back to the Bike and Ped Committee, because it was introduced at that last committee, would be a good place to start as far as crafting the additional language that gets into that type one, type two, type three, type bicycle. We can delve a little bit more. My understanding on the trail issue is, if it's funded through DNR stewardship funds, does that still apply? Do those same DNR rules apply on our trails?
Right.
Based on how the statutes read, it's a department-managed trail versus a local jurisdictional trail, but we'll clarify that. And then, based on maybe some of Mary and Tracy's comments tonight, we can work with our multimedia communications person, Haley, and put together kind of a campaign, if you will, that talks about education, safety prevention type stuff, wear helmet, these are where you can ride, how you should ride, how you should conduct yourself on the road. And we could put that together as a comprehensive package to get out to the general public.
And, you know, maybe that could be even not just Ashwabanon, but a Northeast Wisconsin type thing, you know? So, the rules are the same, no matter what community you go through, you should always wear a helmet, no matter where you are. So, to try to get it out that way, and regionally might be a good thing to maybe work with Wallow on that, they might help to get that out and get it out to the whole community and the whole region.
Okay, now that we got the bikes out of the way, which I agree, it need to be talked about. But the reason I called Joel last week earlier, and last week, I had a call from a constituent that lives in my neighborhood about, and it's not necessarily the e-bikes, but it's the one-wheels, the skateboards, electronic, these younger kids are, I noticed, in a big uptick, just tearing around the streets. Now, you know, you go from east to west on Blue Ridge or April Lane, my street, and they take them hills down and right through the four-way stops, and they're in the middle of the fort, it just, it's a matter of time, somebody's going to get them. But I've noticed, I just wanted to bring up some awareness to it if we're, if anybody else is noticing it, do we have any teeth where an officer can observe it and pull them over? And do we need more rules? You know, you brought it up before, not necessarily, I don't think, but to be able to at least give the officer an ability to pull somebody over and educate them a little bit.
I think Chief will comment on this, but I think we have the tools available to us to do some enforcement and some education, either within our existing code or within traffic code, but I'll let Chief kind of touch on that more specifically.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, those types of vehicles, whether it's the skateboard with one wheel on it, the scooters, they all have to follow the rules of the road, similar to bikes. And so, I think with the language we have, and you know, Patrick can say otherwise, but I think with the language we have, we have enough teeth to do enforcement, to do education as is. You know, it's just a matter of our officers being able to observe that type of behavior and then correct it.
Yeah, and I get it. You know, it's not going to be on the top priority, but like I said, I just wanted to bring up a little bit of awareness, maybe to, maybe when they're out there and one of these kids are scooting around and want to, just to be a little bit more aware and, you know.
And I know, Chris, you and I talked about, you know, the enforcement provisions within the chapter itself. We wouldn't necessarily be going out looking to ticket kids.
Yeah, right.
You know, we're looking to provide education, provide warnings. So, we're giving warnings to juveniles, we're talking to parents, we're going through a sequential process. If we have to get to a citations, it's after several iterative efforts to correct the behavior with that individual.
Yeah, and I can certainly make it a point of emphasis to talk with our officers about the concerns that the village board has, that our community has with these as well, and try to make that more top of mind, if you will, so they're able to educate.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think what I notice most, you're going down Holgrom or even Oneida Street, and an e-bike passes you up, and you're doing, you're probably five miles over the speed limit already, and they're passing you up, and I've seen that more and more, especially with the type threes. They're as good as a car, basically.
You mean, you're going the speed limit, Gary?
Pardon? That was somebody else.
Oh, okay, all right.
It wasn't me, it was somebody else. But I see where we need control, especially with the one-wheeler and two-wheelers like Chris is explaining, because I see it right down Morris Avenue where I have my shop. Kids think the street's theirs, well, they're wrong.
Okay. So...
Do we need a motion to...
Do we need a motion to direct staff?
I think if you want to make something formal, a motion to refer this matter back to Bike and Ped Committee for review and consideration for a recommendation, that would be appropriate.
So, move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to send this item back to Bike and Ped for further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Number 11, items for next agenda. We will have a next agenda, so if you have anything, give the office a call. Number 12, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board, the village of Ashwabanon, may convene into closed session pursuant to A and B as listed in number 12. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So, second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie.
Yes. See you, Mark.
Bye, Mark.